I'd like to welcome everyone. The President, Mr. Callen, is not here today, so I will be running the meeting. We now have, number three is consent and approval, exonerations, fiduciary orders, minutes, purchase orders, miscellaneous bond, et cetera, and budget revisions.
Twenty-six listings, fifteen thousand, three hundred eighty-four dollars, seventy-one cents for tax years two thousand eleven, twelve, and thirteen. Fiduciary orders as of August twenty-eighth. Statements of services rendered by Cynthia Stafford, Lynn Crane, George Armistead, fiduciary commissioners. Minutes of June nineteen, two thousand thirteen. Purchase orders, general county fund expenditures, one hundred eighteen thousand, one fifty-nine, seventy-eight. Cole Severance Fund, eleven thousand, six, eleven, twenty-five. Justin Rich Park, five thousand, eight, seventy-four, fifty. Total of one thirty-five, six forty-five, fifty-three.
Move for approval.
I'll second. It's been properly moved. Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Number four, Renetta McClure there regarding grants, but we told this time we have so many grants that we're going to hold them off for next week, right? Okay. Moving forward, Mr. Doyle, are you able to?
I don't think she's here.
Okay, can we hold that and we'll come back?
Okay.
Because we're a little early. Okay. We do have at one fifteen, Mr. Tom Aiman, Steptoe &amp; Johnson, to the discussion of design build process for the ballpark project and also the collaboration agreement.
We're waiting on someone from WVU.
That's no problem. We can hold off. Why don't, if it's okay, we could just move the correspondents and we will come back. There's the town of Star City.
I have a letter from Allen Chart, Mayor, submitting invoices totaling nine hundred and forty-four dollars from C T L Engineering and Steptoe &amp; Johnson, requesting said invoices be paid directly from the TIF funds. Also, they're enclosing a settlement statement for, from the closing on the Burns Madden property on Boyers Avenue. Town incurred closing cost in the amount of six thirty-three oh nine. This matter respectfully requests reimbursement. Kelly and I talked about this yesterday. Normally, I send this down to the county clerk's office. They issued the checks from the TIF fund to Star City.
Okay.
We were talking about sending this directly to the trustee bank, being United, and having them pay.
There's actually, they have a little over forty-four thousand dollars still in the TIF account that the county is holding.
Right.
So, we can pay those, but in the future, those should actually be paid through the bank. So, this money actually needs to, we will close this account out and send all the money to the bank and then.
Okay.
You want to start September one, then they'll pay all the bills.
Have we advised the town of Star City that we're going to do that?
I will.
Okay.
I'll check with them to see if that's.
And that's how the other TIFs are handled as well, so.
So, basically, we'll pay this bill, then close out the account, give the money to the bank, and then they won't, we won't have to be the middle person, correct?
Right.
Okay.
Then, will you make the deposits directly to United every month when you distribute?
No. They've requested payment every six months.
Okay.
So, May and November, so that money will go into that account, but it is being held for the bond. So, that technically belongs to the bank. I mean, that payment has to go to the bank.
The one issue, and I don't know if it's been thought about, is, is that every expenditure should be approved by the county commission. And if we move money to the bank, and the bank starts issuing it to Star City, then they're bypassing the county commission with their invoices and approval for payment. And that's a big problem with the TIF process.
And what we did before with the industrial hospital, they sent the invoices to me, and then I sent them to the bank. And that was showing me that they had been approved. And then you approved, and I sent it to the trustee bank. So, we are getting them.
Okay.
And technically, as per the agreement, all tax collections are to be submitted to the bank every six months. So, we're technically not supposed to be holding any money in the county at all.
Right.
That is supposed to all go to the bank, so.
I just want to make sure that the bank understands that they don't pay any invoices until the county commission is approved.
And Commissioner, there's actually a requisition form that the county need to assign with all the invoices that are attached that goes to the bank trustee. That's authorization for them to disburse any funds, so they can't even disburse until you all sign that requisition and send it to them.
Which is what we've done with the.
Which is what, how the others.
Yes.
I just wanted to make sure we was touching on the basis.
Right.
So, are you, so basically, we're uniforming the process, and this will resolve that issue?
Yes.
Okay. It's a motion?
Yeah. Again, I just want to make a comment. Star City does an outstanding job with the documentation. And hopefully, all TIFs would conform to that high level of documentation on submissions. But I'll move for approval.
And I'll second. It's been properly moved. And second, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Okay. Is there any, is there any miscellaneous correspondence before we go back?
Yes. I do have correspondence from Phil Millick, Jackson and Kelly. This is regarding the petition, the city of Westover for minor boundary adjustment.
Okay.
It's questioning the acceptance of the revised petition, changing the language a little and explaining. If that was the case, and the commission accepted that petition, which you did, there may not be proof that it was ran by city council first for their adoption, as the first petition was.
You mean Westover Council?
Yes. So, just want to enter this of record. I did for it, Phil.
Okay.
Take a look at, so just wanted to make this a matter of record today.
I think what we need to do is, any correspondence at this point in time, we're really not open for debate on any of the issues at this point in time. We have the public hearing scheduled. Any and all documentation received prior to the hearing should be entered into the record and considered in the decision-making process after the public hearing.
And I believe when we discussed it, the majority of the members felt that it was a minor change, and that's why it was approved. But then that will probably be worked out in the courts. Okay? So, I think we just put a record, and if you can make a copy of that for us, so we have that.
Sure.
Okay.
And also, in this matter, I did receive the publisher's certificate that the ad ran in the dream post.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And we have the postings then too, correct?
Yeah. I submitted that earlier.
And that is September fourth at seven o'clock?
Correct.
In the service building, correct? Okay. Is the new dog catcher here yet?
Yeah.
Oh, good.
Sarah.
Come on down.
Today, we want to introduce a new employee to the K nine Adoption Center. It's Sarah Dalton. She's from the Morgantown area. She's going to be our new midnight shift dog warden slash custodian person to do the cleaning. She is on a six-month probation. After that, we will look at her and make sure she's doing a good job for us, and we're going to start her out at twenty-four thousand, five hundred. And like I said, she is on a six-month probation, and she is entitled for benefits.
Welcome. And I move for approval.
And I second. It's been properly moved. And second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
She started on twenty-six, yes.
Okay. And you started on the twenty. Welcome, Sarah. We're really making a lot of improvements there, and I'm really pleased with the direction. I think all of us are pleased in the direction we're going. And if there's any suggestions or ideas, please feel free to pass them on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Aiman, is WVU here yet?
I'll check.
Okay. We're going to find out first if WVU's here. If not, I'm afraid to go one in case it's.
It's a loss you want.
Okay, good. Okay, at this time, I'll read it again. Thank you. We are early, so I appreciate you coming in early. Tom Aiman from Steptoe &amp; Johnson, discussion of design of the build process for Ballpark Project UTC, and also collaboration agreement for financing and construction of Ballpark Project UTC. And it's all yours, Mr. Aiman.
Sure. Rossi and I have been working on, and I think we've discussed this in the past, but our goal is to have sort of a collaboration agreement.
Right.
Between WVU, Granville, Monview, and the county commission that's going to provide the guidelines as to, you know, how the ballpark piece of all this is going to operate. So, we've been working on that for, gosh, probably a month, month and a half, going back and forth with different drafts and things like that. And we're moving forward in the process, getting almost to the point where, you know, the advisory committee is working with the criteria developer, getting ready to actually put, you know, a bid package together. So, leading up to that, we'd like to have this collaboration agreement in place so that everyone sort of understands what the rules of the game are before we get to that point and actually put anything out to bid. So, I think, at least as far as us, you know, we've been going back and think we're getting down to sort of the final nuts and bolts of where we are with this thing. So, our goal was to kind of come back to the commission, give you all a copy of the current draft of the agreement, and sort of go over and hit the highlights of that so that at least you all know where we are right now. And I understand Eldon's not here, but then, of course, you know, after, get your feedback, you know, make any adjustments to the agreement that we need to make to, you know, allow you all to provide your input. Help kind of explain at least the intent and thought of, you know, the provisions of the agreement, so you know where we're coming from as you go through and read it. And I thought I'd give you my perspective, and if, you know, Rossi from WVU, if he wanted to, you know, provide any input from the WVU side of it. And I thought we'd give you a copy of the agreement, and then maybe just go through and hit the highlights of it if that's agreeable.
That would be great.
Do you have enough copies to include one for Ron Snyder from Green Mill?
I brought six total.
Okay. I think we've got, I've got one for myself, so I guess we can, we've got six to hand out.
We'll have two extra.
Okay.
I can make one.
Yeah, we could get one if you liked one.
If you got any left.
Anyone else have a copy?
Newspaper, probably.
Okay. All right, so, how about the, do you have a little summary that?
Well, this is what was in May.
Okay.
This is what was given out. We would basically be.
So, we're going to discuss the collaboration agreement and then discuss about the discussion of the design separately. How about that? Okay. That's fine. And sort of, sort of, a big.
Together?
A big, if you wouldn't mind to hand those out as well to.
Okay.
This is sort of the, when we came to the commission, I believe, in May, okay, May fifteenth, we went over sort of the design-build process because the commission wanted to get an understanding of what that would look like. And the collaboration agreement addresses a lot of those issues, so it sort of folds together. So, I thought maybe first, we kind of maybe hit the highlights of this summary as to how the design-build process works, and then that sort of leads into the agreement, and the agreement addresses some of these items. So, perhaps if we could hit some of the highlights of that process, then we could talk about the agreement itself. Rossi, did you want to address some of these?
Sure. I think it may be helpful to take the, what we handed in May and tell you where we're at right now in that process. If you turn to page two, basically, we've selected that technical review committee that's at first bullet point. That's the advisory committee that will be in your collaboration agreement.
Excuse me one minute. Can you turn that microphone and hand it towards him? Make sure you can.
Now we have the court.
Thanks. Didn't want anybody to hear. So, basically, the first bullet point there on page two is, the technical review committee is the advisory committee that's in our collaboration agreement. So, we've selected that. The next bullet point that, the stage that needs to be done is the invitation for qualifications. And my understanding is that the advisory committee has taken that step. They have received seven firms that would like to be qualified. I stopped the actual evaluation of those until the collaboration agreement, until we had this meeting today, because I wanted your all's permission to let them go ahead and evaluate those seven proposals, but we'll talk about that here in a minute. So, basically, right now, that's the stage that we're at. We've got the qualifications in. We need to evaluate those qualifications, and we need to select three to five of those firms to proceed to the next step, which would actually be submitting proposals to us. So, the next step after that would be actually going out to the public with our performance criteria and asking for invitations for proposals. That would be them submitting what the design of the ballpark would be, schematic drawings and all that. Once those come in, that technical review committee, major work will start. They, they are required to evaluate those proposals basically on all technical review evaluation criteria that was in the proposals. So, they'll go through that technical review and score each one of those submissions to get an overall score based on a hundred points for technical only. Once the technical is done, the way we've written kind of the collaboration agreement, they would bring that recommendation back to the committee and say, here's how all five of those proposals scored. And from one hundred down to the lowest score would rank them. What's required next is after the commission and the university say, okay, we agree with your scores, the design billboard in Charleston must approve that technical review score. So, we would then go to Charleston. They would take a look at, which is pretty much procedural because they actually have someone set on the advisory committee. So, we go down, we explain to the board how we came up with those numbers, they approve them. The collaboration agreement next really brings now the decision-making into the university and commission's hands, because once those technical review scores are done, there's a separate financial package that is submitted by each proposer. That's separately in a different envelope, and it, and by rules, is not allowed to be opened until the technical review scores are approved by the design billboard. Once they get that approval, they'll come back to the commission and university, and will open the financial packages, starting from the top score down. The financial packages is by formula. The lowest price gets the highest points, starts with a hundred, and then percentage down based upon a formula. Each proposer would be given a certain number of points to a hundred. So, the total available score that you could possibly get is two hundred points, hundred from technical, a hundred from price. You add the two together, that is your apparent successful proposer. Once we open those and do the math, then the university and the county would then have, they would look at the final apparent successful proposer, either accept that or we would not accept that. So, that's kind of how the collaboration agreement sets out what needs to happen in the next stages. Once that is taken care of, the advisory committee's roles kind of would end at that point. The collaboration agreement then goes into actual construction. The university would enter into a design-build contract with the successful proposal that has been approved by the county and commission. The next step would be you all appointing someone to oversee the construction on your behalf, and the university appointing someone to oversee the construction on their behalf. That would last for about ten to eleven months is the scheduled construction for the ballpark. Those people would be responsible for making sure the construction contract was being fulfilled correctly, approving the invoices to bring to you all for payment and so forth. I'll jump ahead so we can talk about the collaboration agreement. Once the construction is done and accepted at final completion, then we would move into the long-term lease agreement and the operations agreement.
So, that's not till after everything's done? Okay. That's a clarification. I thought that had to be done before.
Well, we would probably be working on the terms and conditions.
But not finalizing.
And we may finalize, we may not, until it's done. We would hope that everything could be worked out in that construction period, so. So, that's, that's what's going to happen next if we want to jump into.
Sure.
Okay.
So, then, that takes us into the collaboration agreement, and the design-build process obviously folds right into this. So, just to hit some of the highlights of it, you know, we've got some background here on the first page as to the creation of the district and what got us to this point. Then we go into the actual agreement. So, you know, the purpose in, section one, the purpose and intent of the agreement is basically, the parties agree to mutually collaborate to get the ballpark project financed and constructed. And the parties, as you'll see on the first page, are WVU, of course, the county commission, Monview as the overall developer of the university town center and the entire district. So, Monview is sort of the master developer, and they're responsible for sort of making this whole thing work together, and the ballpark piece is obviously a part of that. And then, the town of Granville, obviously, the town center is within the municipal boundaries of the town, so they're a logical party to the agreement as well. So, then, and two, we've just have a recognition that the county has formed this excise tax district or economic opportunity development district, and what the boundaries of the district are, and that's just pursuant to the order that has been previously entered by the county. And that's three as well. On four, this is the recognition that the county has elected to act as the district board.
Right.
In lieu of appointing a separate district board. So, that'll sort of make it a little bit more of a streamlined process and not having to go through another entity. And then, having, so, if we had a separate board, you'd have one level of approvals, and then the county would then look at that approval and then provide its own separate approval. So, this is a little bit more of a streamlined process. The advisory committee, this is the committee that has already formed up and has been working with the criteria developer in providing input as to the design of the ballpark and what it will actually look like. So, the membership of that committee is comprised of at least one representative from each party to this agreement. So, all the parties that we mentioned, you know, they have the ability to have one member on the advisory committee. However, a maximum of three. So, one to three members from each party. One representative from, from minor league baseball, because obviously, they're going to be, you know, have a role in operating the facility and also be a user of the facility. The criteria developer, that's just by statute, the design-build statute, that the criteria developer is to be on this technical review committee, however, as a non-voting member. And then, again, by statute, a representative of the design-build board. And then, three reps of, you know, users or potential user parties of the ballpark. So, that, just by category, that's how it would stack up. And then, as far as who those individuals would be that would be fulfilling those roles, the university, you'll see, has appointed three or would like to have three, and that would be Oliver Locke as the director of athletics, Bill Lynn as the project manager, Mr. Saab as president of Morgantown baseball. And then, as far as the county, we have Mr. Jim Brony.
Jim Brony.
Jim Brony. Okay. We all know him as Jim.
Jim.
He's behind you, careful.
Mr. Doyle as director of facilities, and might be, Mr. Smith as deputy director of Office of Emergency Services. So, those are the county representatives on the advisory committee or technical review committee. Then, the town manager from Granville as a party, Monview's representative, Mr. Perrin. Two individuals named from the New York Penn Professional Baseball League. And then, we'll fill in the name here of the design-build board representative and also the criteria developer, and that would, of course, would be non-voting. And then, we have, as far as citizen advisory representatives, we'd have two from Bow Park. And then, we've got another one on here, sort of on a preliminary basis, that I'll need to follow up with you and talk to you all about that.
Okay.
Any questions about that piece? Just, that's just the advisory committee that's sort of already in place.
Right.
Okay.
And just to be clear, that will be the technical review committee?
Right. Exactly. There'll be both.
So, we won't have to have, again, streamlining?
No, and that's what, that's what we wanted, and we appreciate everyone agreeing to that.
Okay. And then, as far as the ballpark project, you know, WVU obviously is, has the ability under this agreement to select the site and the town center, and the actual orientation of the ballpark as to where it will sit on that site, and, you know, the configuration of the site.
It may help if I give you a little update on that, so that you know where we're at. Basically, we have the preliminary layout and where the ballpark will sit. I don't know if you're aware of the property that we're talking about, but the ballpark would kind of face towards the river, set in the back towards the university hospitals property. Probably beginning on Sunday, they will, or Monday, they will start surveying that and doing the corehole drillings, just to make sure that, you know, we can build what we want to build on the property. As long as that comes back successfully, we will probably move into a purchase agreement and try to have it around September fifth, so that we can go through the legal hurdles that we need to do to get that approved, so that we can close around October fourth, fifth, is what our goal is. And the reason for that goal is, is that the, the land work that Monview will have to do to the site, what they call rough grading, to bring it up to the elevation level that will be needed to construct the ballpark, will take two and a half months. So, that puts us right at that December fifteenth construction date we need to be starting. So, we're pushing really to get that closed on that timeline.
And again, you know, the maximum cost that WVU is agreeing, you know, to put into the actual acquisition of the land would be the two million, one hundred thousand, and that was sort of always the number that we were working with.
And just to update that a little bit, there was some change. We're actually going to probably put about two point three million, just because it's probably going to come out to a little over seven acres, that, so that it's situated perfectly on the property. So, we've been approved for that amount, so we're probably going to go to about two point three.
Do we need to mod, we have to?
We.
You'll modify that one, okay.
Yeah, I just forgot to tell Tom.
Okay.
And then, as far as, you know, then WVU will be responsible for doing their own site due diligence with respect to the core drilling and the survey work and all that stuff, so, you know, the county's not involved, or Monview and that piece of it. That's their piece of property, and they'll handle the site work for it. B, programming and public bidding, and this is the piece of it that sort of folds into the whole design-build process, and it gets fairly detailed here, but just basically, under one, ballpark planning and programming, you know, this is just a recognition that the advisory committee, you know, has the ability to obtain all the information that they would like to have from all the parties, from WVU, to meet with the parties, to get information from the criteria developer, and overall, just to be able to provide their input as they would like to provide it to the parties and, you know, in the design-build process. Preparation of estimates, WVU will work on preparing as, obviously, the designs become more final, and, you know, the actual layout and building that will actually be constructed, an estimate of the cost of construction. The maximum amount would be the sixteen million, two hundred and fifty thousand, so that's the amount that would come out of the bond proceeds into the project fund and be available to put into actual construction of the ballpark.
I'm sorry to keep interrupting, but I want to update you as we haven't updated this. We did have an initial conversation with minor league team, just to start that conversation, of what they may be willing to do as infrastructure. They are reviewing right now to potentially put anywhere between a million and two million dollars of capital upfront to help us get more in the ballpark than what we were. So, that sixteen point two, hopefully, could move upward a little bit. So, we're looking forward to getting that report back to them, from them. So, I'll update you if that, that number's going to increase.
Okay. And then, number three, program submission. So, this is basically, the advisory committee then has the ability to, you know, meet with the criteria developer, obtain all the information that they would like meet with the criteria developer, obtain all the information that they would like to have, talk with all the parties. And then, they then have the ability to submit their recommendation as to the design of the ballpark. That then takes us into the bidding stage of the, of the process. Rossi, you might be a little bit more.
Sure. And just to clarify, three, they are not, they're submitting to the county and the university, that advisory group. That program submission will come to us first. We'll look at it and say, yes, we agree, and then it'll go into the public bidding. The, the public bidding pursuant to the act, we really don't have much control. The code of state rules basically lays out everything we have to do. The first part of public bidding, again, has already been started, which is the qualifications of design-build firms. That is the first stage that we must go through. So that would be 4.1. The way we've laid this out is that the advisory committee and the university will do all that solicitation, receive all the proposals, evaluate those proposals. At least for qualifications, the firms have to, to meet a minimum of a 70-point total to be able to be qualified to move on. So, out of the seven, we are, you have to have a minimum of three and a maximum of five. So, the people, the five who score the highest in those qualifications would basically move into the second stage, which is 4.2. Once we've qualified everybody, we will then take the programming that you all approved in step three and we will put that out in an RFP that says, here's the programming that we want for our ballpark. They will have, from my understanding, about a month and a half to design, to schematic drawings, the new baseball park. So what they'll submit to us is drawings, a technical review package proving that everything that we ask for in the ballpark will be met by their design. Once those come in under, under 4.2, the advisory committee will then score, as I talked about, the technical review score. They will score all of those proposals by a technical review evaluation. Once they get that, they will bring that again to the commission and county for approval. If we approve of those scores, we'll go to the design-bid board, get their approval, come back and then open the financial proposals, score them, add them together. Then we have our selected ballpark. Once, once we know the, the successful proposer, the final determination under, under the code is that the agency, which we've kind of defined as the university and county, because we've got a joint kind of agencies, has to approve that technical reviews recommendation. So we will actually have an official approval of the final. So that's, that's down through the public bidding.
So I think on that piece of it, I think it's important for the county to understand that the scoring and really evaluation of the proposals is done by the technical review committee.
Right.
Once it comes back to the county and WVU from the committee, the scoring is basically already done and in place and it's just sort of a final official act of approval by the county and WVU at that point. And that's just a statu-, that's a statutory process.
That's no problem.
Okay.
Okay, so that takes us through five, B5, all the way up to what, we now move into the exciting breaking ground, which is the 6C, which is ballpark construction. The, the university, I mean, basically, since we're the, under the long-term lease, the one that's actually building it on behalf of the county and WVU, we would issue the, the contract to the contractor. Under West Virginia law, we're very limited. There's only one design-build contract and there's one supplemental conditions that are approved by the state of West Virginia for use in design-build. So basically, we enter into a design-build contract and the exhibit is their proposal that we approved. And then they have to build that ballpark pursuant to that contract and the proposal that they submitted to the university. Now, in that proposal, there may be a few adjustments. There'll probably be a meeting between the county, the university, and whoever else that will sit down with that contractor because there may be some non-substantive things that we have to work out in that contract. But other than that, I mean, it's, it's, what we approved is what has to be built. So we'll enter that into, that's section one. Section two is construction management oversight and acceptance. In design-build, it is a lot different than design-bid-build. They are responsible for all architectural, engineering, construction services, everything under one contract. The only thing the university and the county will be doing is making sure that they are doing what the construction contract says they have to do. So we'll be out on site as, as any other time, but we will only be, you know, basically watching their means and methods and making sure that the construction meets the contract. In a design-build contract, the contractor has the right to bill based on progress payments. In other words, by a percentage of what is done on the contract with a retainage of 10% held to the end. So basically, what will happen is the construction managers, both on the university and the commission side, will receive a pay application from the contractor that says, you know, in the last 30 days, I finished 10%. They will review that 10% of work, make sure it's up to quality, standards, everything, except that 10%, and then present that invoice to, I think, a trust or trustee or to the county for approval.
Right.
That will get paid less the retainage, the retainage is, is held to make sure the contract gets done. And then that process will be followed for about 10 to 12 months, whatever it takes to get the construction done. Section three is dealing with change orders because in every construction contract, we know that unforeseen circumstances or something happens that there may be a change order. The good part about design-build is change orders are the responsibility of the contractor unless it's out of scope. So unless we start adding to that ballpark or something happens that it was not foreseen in, in the bid, the responsibility for a major change order, change order falls to the contractor. However, there is a potential that something like that would happen. The way we've, we've set that up is any major change order, which means that it's gonna change the ballpark plans, has to be approved by the university and the county. And three. Last is just acceptance of the ballpark. They will have two dates to meet. One is substantial completion, which means that the facility is usable for its intended purpose. In other words, you know, pretty much 99% of it is done. And then they will have a final completion date, which is normally 30 days after substantial to do small touch-up work. We'll do a site walk and say, we see marks here, this needs to be corrected a little bit. So once we complete it, it will be basically ready for operations and the target opening date.
Which would be sometime in 2015.
Right.
Better be January of 2015.
Right, hopefully earlier in 2015 than the latter. And then timetable, so it's also envisioned that there will be a timetable or schedule for this whole process that we'll attach as an exhibit to this agreement. And again, I think it's 10 to 12 months of construction.
The construction is 10 to 12, but depending on what we wanna attach here, we have received from the financing bonds and everything, a very detailed schedule of not only the construction, but the financing and the bonds and the issuance and, you know, the whole nine yards, so.
Right.
It may be easier just to attach.
A comprehensive schedule.
Comprehensive schedule so that everybody can see exactly what our timelines are.
Okay. And then the financing plan is basically what we've reviewed with the county in the past, that the county is issuing only excise tax bonds and not also property TIF bonds to finance the construction of the ballpark project. And based, and the size of the potential bond issue is based on the projected development in the district, future development, and how much excise taxes that will generate. So that, you know, equates to a certain principal amount of bonds that could be issued. And right now, we think that's about 18.25 or 18 and a half million. And then you take out of that all the other items necessary to be paid for from the bond issuance, closing costs, funding a reserve fund. Because these bonds will likely be placed with a bank, you will need a reserve fund to cover one year of interest payments on the bonds. That's typically required by a bank purchaser, so you'd fund that out of the bond proceeds. Probably also some capitalized interest to pay interest on the bonds for a certain period of time. That way, it allows you time to, for the development to occur in the district that would be necessary to begin to pay the actual interest on the bonds. Before that occurs, you basically borrow the money to pay the interest. So, that would be the financing plan. The project fund would be a fund that was, that is held by the bond trustee. So as with your other TIF bond issues, we'll have a bond trustee. They will hold all of the bond accounts, the reserve fund that I mentioned, the capitalized interest account, a revenue fund, so that as the excise tax dollars are requisitioned from the state, probably on a monthly basis, they will be transferred from the treasurer's office to the bond trustee, deposited in a revenue fund, and then flow down into payment of the bonds from there. The other and most important probably fund is the project fund. And from that, I think we were looking at the 16.2 figure that we had earlier in the agreement that would go into that fund from the bonds. If the minor league team or others may be placing monies into the project, we might place those into the project fund as well. Not necessarily required for the bonds, but it's an option. And then the project fund would be subject to requisitioning by the county so that the criteria developer would likely prepare the pay packet, submit that to WVU. They would look it over, make sure everything is in accordance with their understanding based on the construction inspection that's occurred. If they're okay with it, it would then come back to the county for your all's final blessing to look it over, make sure everything appears to be in order. Then county would sign it, send it to the trustee, and then that's authorization to disburse funds out of the project fund to actually pay the contractor. Ownership of the ballpark, the way it's envisioned right now is that, obviously, WVU, as we went over before, is acquiring the actual dirt in the town center, the site of the ballpark. They would enter into a ground lease with the county commission to ground lease the site. The county would construct, well, the improvements, the ballpark and other associated improvements would be constructed pursuant to the design-build contract owned by the county. The county would lease the improvements pursuant to a lease and development agreement to WVU. The term of that lease would likely go the term of the bonds. So if the bonds are paid off, let's say in 12 years, it would be structured to go the final, you know, the full maturity of the bonds, which would be 30 years. It'd be a 30-year term bond. However, if based on the actual collections from the revenues, the bonds pay off in 12 years, then the lease would run the 12-year term and then ownership of the improvements would then revert to WVU at that point. So then, you know, the bonds are paid off, the county's, you know, subsidy and the project has been repaid. The dirt was always owned by WVU. At that point, with the bonds being repaid, the ballpark would then revert to WVU as well.
And just keeping in mind that it doesn't get rid of the use agreements.
Okay, that's what I was gonna ask clarification for.
Yeah, those go on.
If you could explain that just so that people understand, right?
Yeah.
So, so that the concept that the county wanted to have in place all along is that the ballpark would not just be for purposes of playing WVU ballgames, baseball games there and minor league baseball games there. There would also be this public use component where the county and Granville and the other stakeholders would have an opportunity to have days set aside for events in the ballpark. And there would be a use agreement, a separate agreement from this that would lay out how, how all of that would take place. And we would actually, I think what we're contemplating is setting up a committee that would, once the minor league baseball schedule has been determined for the baseball season and WVU's, you know, baseball season has been determined for the home games and use of the facility, and we then know what the other available dates are for use and the committee could then sit down, and there'd be representatives from the county and from WVU on that committee could sit down and then work out the, this public use on these other dates. So that's, that's what we have for that. Occupation, operation and maintenance of the ballpark. The term, this just ties back to what I said before, that, you know, the, the lease would be designed to run the full length of the term of the bonds. But if the bonds pay off earlier, then the lease would terminate and then the, you know, the improvements would then revert to WVU. Now, as far as, you know, rent and revenues and things like that, well, it is, but, you know, the commission has expressed some level of interest in, you know, what would happen with revenues of the facility. No, no one expects this facility to be generating a lot of net revenues in anyone's hands. So what we're currently looking at is some sort of a fixed rental payment that the minor league team would pay to the county. That wouldn't be a large number. I mean, again, we don't think that the ballpark is going to be throwing off large revenues or profits to any of the parties involved. But, so there'd be some sort of a fixed rental that would be due, no matter what the performance would be. And then if the minor league team is operating the ballpark and realizing substantial profits from that operation, which no one thinks is expected, then there would be some sort of graduated scale based on their net profits that a portion or percentage of that would then inure to the county.
And, and just to clarify, in our discussions with the minor league team, we wanted to get, because we've never operated one of these parks either, so we, you know, to get a little information from them, they clearly expect to make a profit. I mean, they're in the business of making a profit. They don't wanna lose money, they don't wanna have to subsidy this park. They have worked with other cities on different ballparks and different structures of how to ensure that the, the money flows back into the county or into the ballpark itself. They have done that in many different ways that we can think about. Again, percentage of profit above a certain percentage or whatever. They also do it on ticket sales. If their break kind of even point is 1,500, you know, fans per baseball game, they've had situations where they pay a dollar per fan, per ticket, over and above a certain limit per game. So they are, what I'm trying to get across is they are more than willing to share any, any of that revenue with the county. WVU is not really interested in, other than the fact of put some back into reserves so that we can, you know, keep up the, the ballpark to the standard it needs to. But I think the minor league team is gonna work with us a lot, so.
And the other, I guess, important point from this would be that, you know, WVU, under the agreement, is gonna be responsible for the management and operation and maintenance of the, of the ballpark.
Right.
And they'll, of course, have the ability to contract with a minor league baseball team or someone else to be able to carry that out, that obligation out on their end. But as, with respect to, you know, what the county's concern is, you're not gonna be responsible for operation and maintenance of the ballpark.
If by chance, there's a major problem situation, like, and there's a large maintenance situation, but would you be coming back to the county to see or completely, WVU's gonna be in charge of that? You understand what I'm saying, if there could be some?
Well, are we talking about, you know, just letting people know what happened?
No.
Or actually paying for it?
The actual financial. That's my, that's, you know, 'cause hopefully that won't be.
Hopefully it'll be insured.
Yeah, hopefully it's insured.
Okay.
If it's not insured, I, I think that WVU is quite aware that they're financially responsible for the management and operations, so.
Okay, that's fine.
Um, the, the rest of this talks about things I've already gone over here with, uh, some sort of scheduling committee.
Could I ask some clarification, just, and, and I appreciate it, and, and I do want to get that clear that, that, um, WVU is buying the seven, seven acres, right? And it's, they're putting the two point three million dollars out. Is there a mechanism for them to collect that money or is that? Okay, so I want that clear, so that they are putting up the two point three million dollars.
We are.
And that was a mistake that I did not realize. I thought you were getting the money back, so I want to get that clear.
Yeah.
Yeah.
A- actually, we're, we're gonna spend two point three plus all surveys and drillings and all that is not part of the two point three. We expect to have anywhere between two point five and two point seven in.
And I think that needs to be the public to realize that because at one time when we discussed it, we thought it was being, you know, it was like a loan. I thought they were talking about a loan, 'cause when you said you were putting the money upfront and they're getting it back. But, okay, so that, that's a clarification, and I think that's good to know.
I think Tom clarified that when the application to the West Virginia Department or Economic Office did not include those costs.
Right.
It's not a budget expense.
And that's what I saw when you, when you mentioned that that time, okay.
That covers the basic business deal of the collaboration agreement. So that's, that's what we're looking at. So we wanted to bring you all back in the loop, let you know the discussions that Rossi and I have been having and others with respect to the ballpark and this agreement and the, the design build process so that you're aware of what's been going on, where the, where we stand on the agreement.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, if you all feel like you have some particular item of input that you want to provide into this agreement, just let me know, um, because.
I, I apologize, should we, um, put it on the work session since, and then, because President Callen isn't here, should we put on next week's work session and then approve? Do we have to approve it? I mean, is there a timeline? That's my question.
I think the next thing that we'd want to do is we'd want to set it up for official action of approval by the commission.
I don't really think we need to place this on the work session.
Okay, that's fine.
I, uh, you know, this will be available to, to Commissioner Callen. I think we can put it on our agenda for next Wednesday for a vote of approval.
And we have the tape too, so he can hear.
Yep.
Okay.
Um, just to talk about timing a little bit, um, again, and we don't want to spend two point five million dollars or wherever we're in the land without knowing that we're pretty comfortable everybody's on the same page. So one of the contingencies in our purchase agreement is the execution of the collaboration agreement. However, uh, you know, our survey and core holes are gonna take a week to two weeks. So th- there's a time period, we're not rushing anybody. And actually internally, WVU is still kind of looking at this. Um, Tom and I are really the only ones that have, you know, spent many hours trying to figure this thing out. So there's still some reviews going, so please take your, you know, the time that you need to make sure we get everything in there that, that we want, so.
I, I really think that you all have done a very thorough job, uh, and I think you've explained it very well.
Thank you.
I, I wouldn't, and just at this point, uh, based upon your review and, and the furnishing of the documents, I don't foresee any problems with approval of this. I'll be surprised if, if there is any, uh, items that can't be addressed. I think they would be minor in nature if there is.
Sure.
And, and I think they were addressed at our last meeting, executive session, and I think because of that, I think we have a very mutual agreement that, I mean, we're real pleased, and especially the committee that is staying the same, which was, was one of the focal points that I think really helps us.
And quite honestly, from that meeting, we had a lot more detail added and, and stuff, so.
So, yeah, I, I agree, so we, yeah.
So what, so what my plan would be is that, you know, Rossi will, they'll complete their internal review on WVU's side of it, and we'll have a little bit more back and forth on some of the minor details on this. And then I would then like to get a final draft probably emailed up to you all to get in a, you know, let you all look at it. Make sure, you know, if you have any, if Eldon or anyone else has any input or feedback, just let me know. And then, um, once you all are comfortable, we can go ahead and put it on the agenda then for action of approval.
Just, uh, keep in mind, we need a little bit of, uh, lead time so that we can get it on the agenda for next week.
Yep.
So the sooner, sooner you can get any, uh, changes to us, the better.
I would plan to have it to you by Friday if, um, if we're gonna.
Our review is happening right now, and it's only a couple people, so.
So my goal then would be to get it to you by Friday to get in the packet for next Wednesday's meeting. And I don't think there, from what I'm hearing, I don't think it's incumbent that we do it next Wednesday, but if we're ready to go, we may as well go ahead and do it.
Yeah, there's no sense in delaying.
We could always approve, and if there's a minor change, make the minor change the next week, and that wouldn't be a problem.
That's right.
The, the one thing I would like to clear or get a consensus on is that the advisory committee can go ahead and take that next step of reviewing the qualifications and, and set them loose to, to do it.
I have no problem with that.
Neither do I, in fact, I thought that was the agreement that we had. We had to do it publicly, right, so now, yes.
It, it was, I just had them delay just until we had this meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
I believe, uh, I want to thank you, I agree with, uh, Bill. Um, we had requested a lot from the two of you, and we want to thank you. And with Tom, it was rough, but we really do appreciate your support, and I think both WVUs and Tom and the county working together. I think this is gonna be an exceptional building.
We're excited.
All right, very good, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you.
Tom, I have a question before you go, uh, since you're already here. When can we have our first meeting on the funding for the renovations to the, uh, new Montague County, uh, Justice Center?
Well, I think what, what, at least what I was asked to do, I think, was to come up here next Wednesday and go over where you are, are in the process.
Oh, did you? Okay, so that's next one. That's, that's what I, that's what I, that's what I.
See, that's what you like, it's a, yeah. Like, it's like dying, it shows she's already kind of ahead of it. Well, thank you very much.
Oh, good.
And Walker, and they've both received packets of the proposed.
Thank you again. Okay, that takes care of the items the correspondence were up to, if I'm correct, unfinished business, which is proposed bylaws for Camp Muffley. Who would like to speak on that?
Lynette and Jamie worked on these, I believe you all have a copy.
I've reviewed them.
Yes.
Any changes, suggestions, amendments?
No, uh, I think they did an outstanding, excellent job on it. Uh, I do have some supplemental issues related to it, uh, after we take that disposition on, on approval or disapproval of the bylaws.
So if there's no discussion, is there a motion to approve the bylaws?
I'll move that we approve the bylaws for Camp Muffley.
And I second, it's been properly moved and second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed. Uh, just for clarification also, this is the second step of Camp, uh, Muffley. We are also in the process of doing bylaws, is that correct, for? For Chestnut Ridge. So therefore, all will have bylaws now, they're a little bit tweaked, a little bit differently for each individual park. But we want to get it clear that, that all three parks will have these new bylaws with us, uh, with, with the advisory boards, and we would be overseeing the advisory boards, that's correct? Okay, is there anything else? Yes, go ahead.
I just have a, a comment, now that these are in place, I would assume now that the board that has been in existence is now defunct.
That's, that's, uh, some additional information I was gonna bring up.
Go ahead.
One is that, uh, and all you make a motion if you need to get it a matter of record, is that I think we need to send a copy of this, uh, these new bylaws to each of, uh, the prior, uh, board members on the little board. And, uh, that cover letter should make them aware of the approval of the, uh, new bylaws, uh, should make them aware of the establishment of a new advisory board, and should make them aware that they are certainly eligible to apply, to be appointed to the advisory board. As I understand it, if my memory serves me correct, we're gonna have five members on that board.
Yes, sir.
We will have the, uh, four H representatives, an ex officio member, non-voting member of that board.
Yes.
And we have, uh, four or five openings in, uh, that we will be filling. We'll have five openings that we'll be filling. So, uh, Ben, if you can help us out with the advertising a little bit, that, uh, anyone who's interested in serving on that board do, uh, send us some documentation requesting to be considered. And we'll consider all applicants, uh, for appointment to the new, uh, advisory board to Camp Muffley.
For clarification, do we need a motion on that? I don't believe we do because we've now accepted new bylaws, but do you want to, should we be safe?
I think to be safe, you should do a motion.
Okay.
I move to what I just said.
Second to what he's just said, which is basically that sending letters out, explaining the new bylaws and the, the dissolvement of the other small board, and that we will be moved forward to taking, uh, applications. So it's been properly moved and seconded by the gentleman on the, in the county commission. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, no, yes?
Yesterday, I went through our list, I posted everything
Yes.
updated on the website, and I also included five members here pending approval for bylaws.
The, the other, the other thing is that, uh, and, and I think this is, as we all know, it's a sensitive, uh, topic with the, uh, what I will call now the used-to-be board. Uh, but I think that we need to communicate to the, uh, camp superintendent that there needs to be a transition, that this board, as far as we're concerned, is nonexistent. Uh, access to those facilities should not be any different than access by any member of the public. Uh, and that, uh, there should be no removal of any equipment, uh, or supplies from, from Camp Muffley. Uh, I, I just don't want to see us get into any future conflicts. Uh, there needs to be a clean break here and reas- and establishment of a new direction for this camp, and we need to do it without, uh, any more ill feelings than, uh, absolutely is necessary and hopefully none are necessary, but, uh, if they are, they are. We need to expedite this conclusion of transition and move on to the future.
And to add on to that, I agree. I think one other clarification is that we are still very strongly supportive of the four H program. The four H program is not stopping. It will continue at that camp, and we will promote it at that camp. And I want that, get that very clear. But the Camp Muffley is a county camp that will have not only the four H program, but other programs that we're gonna be offering to the county citizens.
And the bylaws state Camp Muffley Advisory Board bylaws come of Montague County four H, so it's.
Thank you, good.
Yep.
Okay. Is there any other unfinished business? Diane?
No.
Okay. On the new business, we have, oh, my favorite, Cable Franchise Authority.
For many years, the commission has considered off and on the, uh, being a franchise authority for cable companies operating outside of municipalities. If you choose to not accept and continue that responsibility, you are permitted to transfer the authority to the Public Service Commission, and that would be by motion.
Okay, is there any discussion on that?
No.
Would, do I have a motion?
Yeah, I'll move, uh, for approval.
Second, it's been properly moved and second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Also for clarification, even though we are the Cable Franchise Authority and a deputist on city council, we have lit- literally no say. So all they can do is come complain to us, but there's nothing we can do. Then we refer it to the next level. So this way, we're just getting rid of the middle person and passing it on. Okay, great. Is there any other new business? Okay, uh, reports from Mr. Bartola?
I requested Debbie to do a survey of, uh, the, uh, community centers as well as the senior centers. And of course, today it was added in the, uh, parks, uh, about the interest level of, uh, if they had the equipment, a large screen TV and a DVD player, if they would be interested, uh, if the county explored purchasing that for them, uh, establishing a, uh, family night or movie night or activities night at those facilities. Uh, there's a lot of the older movies out there that, uh, can be purchased very reasonably. The, uh, the, uh, the results of that I might share with you is, is we're looking at, and talked with, uh, Mr. Doyle, uh, he's gonna try to get a bulk price on, on the TVs as well as the DVD players, because we think we can do much better on the price, at least for us to consider. And once we get that price, we'll put it on our agenda, uh, to consider the purchase. But, uh, it looks like we're, we would be looking at purchase of fifteen large screen TVs and, and DVD players. Uh, there's, uh, two, two facilities that say they're not interested, and I think one of them is 'cause they are locked into the football game season coming in. And then there was one that we weren't able to make any communication contact with. But, uh, the interest, uh, and I'll just read you a couple of comments here, Debbie. Yes, very interested, uh, yes, good idea, yes, willing to try, yes, interested, yes, very interested. Uh, we do have one has to check with the board. Uh, that's, uh, that's new on me, I mean, uh, to get a gift, I guess, you gotta check with the board whether you can accept it or not. Uh, yes, has considered, yes, has considered, yes, willing to try. But, uh, I, I just, I just think it's an, it's, uh, a potential activity for everywhere to draw people in for community activities, in a healthy, family kind of way. And, and then, of course, the, the parks and the community centers can make their own determination in terms of what movies that they would like to sponsor, whether or not they want to have popcorn and cookout and hot dogs and, uh, how they would promote that. But, uh, the big purchase, uh, which would be the equipment, uh, if we can get cooperation on price, uh, would be done by the county and furnished to these, uh, facilities. So I'm optimistic that we'll be able to work this thing out, I hope.
I think it's an excellent idea, and we talked about it. Is there any other issues that you would like to?
Not at this time.
Okay, um, I just have two quick issues. Um, I'm gonna request, um, I had asked West TV, and at first I want to thank them because I've been receiving numerous positive comments that people are actually watching the program. And, um, they are understanding what the county commission does. I'm gonna ask to put on the, uh, work session. I'm asking for two hundred fifty dollars to be put on so they could tape the program on September fourth, which is the annexation, because a lot of people will not be able to make it. I think it's a very important program, and I think these are the kind of things we can do for a minimal cost. I heard last year you had a stenographer, which would have cost a, a lot more money. So this way, we can have the tape, people can see the tape and see what's going on. So I'll ask that to be put on the agenda. Um, the other issue is, I believe, and I can't remember Bill or Lynette or, so can remember, we are meeting, I believe, September twenty-sixth, I forget what we're calling that, where all the city councils and the county commission, and there's a fancy name we came up with, and I wanted to say that, but with Diane not here, we'll have to, when she comes back, we'll, we'll remember the name. But, uh, we will, we have gotten that approved.
Community?
Community? Something, something.
Community Leadership Forum.
Thank you, Community Leadership Foreman.
Forum.
Okay, and we will be having that at seven o'clock on Thursday evening, September twenty-sixth, and that will be in the Charis Building. And, uh, I also want to say, and I see Evans here with WVU Student Body, even though we will not have you at the table because it's actually a government, we would like you to be there and have representation because we think that'd be an important part, so you could be a part of the, the discussion. So if you could pass that back on to the student government. Those are the only two issues I have, and with Mr. Callen not here, we will have reports, basically, again, I'm not gonna ask individually, is there any elected officials? Well, well, let's go first, are there any department supervisors who have any issues? I, let's go priority. No, I've seen none? Go on, okay. Are there any reports from any elected officials? All right, this is getting good. Okay, at this time, number ten, comments from the public. Uh, we request you take no more than three to four minutes. Um, is there anyone in the public who would like to speak? Oh, go ahead. And if you'd state your name and address so we can have it for the record again.
Evan Dove, thirty-seven, Shady Grove, Morgantown, West Virginia, SGA representative of the county. Uh, beginning of, again, we'll be there at the September twenty-sixth meeting. Hopefully, we'll have more delegation than be also attending. Uh, we weren't able to submit it to the official correspondence this week, but I do have. but I do have something for the county commissioners to recognize. This document is basically an invitation to attend our meetings and also to bring forth any public service projects or any ideas that you may wish to tell the student body and government to this meeting. We'll be able to submit it for the entire board of governors and all the different departments and see what we can do about making a cooperation to enhance the relationship.
You know, if I might mention something to you, and if this comes to fruition here, this, this family activity or movie night, in terms of some students who are used to organizing activities, who may be willing to go out and work with these different organizations on the opportunities and options they may have, and how they can get it organized, and how to promote them, and those kinds of things, huh?
We do have students that have utilized Camp Muffley, not only as students of West Virginia University, but residents of the area and the county. So, I'm sure there are organizations within the university and also students that are not affiliated with anyone, but would be interested in the project if they're given proper notice. So, I previously took the information on the senior centers to them. I'll now take that information toward the board of governors tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for the invitation, Mr. Dove. I believe that we will try and attend and keep you prepared too. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Hi there.
I was out of the room.
Yes.
Okay. I had just a couple things on the, the fitness program.
Oh, yes, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I've probably heard from eight to ten of the gyms and physical fitness facilities in the county. They're very interested in our participation. Going to put together a summary and get it out to the employees so they can kind of see what's available and choose. One thing they did mention was identification. How can they tell county employees? So, we might want to think about an identification system, perhaps in the county clerk's office for all new employees. It might be the good place to start, and then catch up with all the current employees to have their ID tags made. If that's something you want us to look into, we can.
Do we have ID tags at this time?
Our courthouse does it, the sheriff's office does.
Sheriff's office, okay.
Accessors.
Do you?
Accessors do.
Okay, so it's something that I think we need, well, again, I cannot speak for one person, but I think it's something that needs to be looked at.
We, we also need the fees, what they're going to charge.
At the fitness facilities?
Yes. Of, of the different ones.
Right.
We need to look at it competitively to see which is going to make the best offer for the county.
But what I'm telling them is, it's probably going to be more of a cafeteria plan, where if, if five people want to go to Rob's Fitness, they can. Or if we want to go to Lakeview because they live at Cheat Lake, they can. We're not going to, I don't think, limit them to one gym.
Well, I, I don't think we want to do that, but I think if someone says they want to go to Lakeview and it's going to cost a hundred dollars a month, and someone says, oh, twenty-four exercises, only going to charge sixty dollars a month, I don't think we can prove expending more money than necessary per county program.
I, we're, the employees are paying for it.
Employees.
All counties.
Yeah, we got to work, yeah. What they're doing is a discount, because if you can get so many employees, they will give it.
Well, then they can spend all the money.
Actually, there's one place that's fifty-five dollars an hour.
Fifty-five dollars an hour?
For training.
Okay.
So, I'm going to put together some.
So, that's what you're going to.
Where they want to go and how much they.
Okay. But I think that's a great idea, and I said, and I believe, like, the one place, and I won't mention the name, where they said, as long as they have ten people and they do it for six months, they will guarantee an extremely low price. So, the commitment is, is like a period of time. That's what the, that's what the, most of the places are asking for. And also, am I correct that some will even possibly come here to do several programs? Is that correct?
Yes.
The possibility.
Yeah.
We don't have a room for roadie shit.
Zumba in the main hallway.
Yeah, it's just fun.
But, yeah, and, and again, I want to thank you, because I think this is a great idea. Not only a healthy idea, but also a cut down on our medical costs in the long run.
Continue with that.
Okay, is there anything else?
No.
Okay, I did, while you were gone, I asked to put on the work session a two hundred and fifty dollar payment for West TV to discuss, so they can film the program.
You want to have a work session or a regular session?
Well, I didn't.
I mean, next, next week.
Well, I could put it next week, yeah. Okay, if you put it on next week, okay, let's just put it on next week. Basically, because we didn't, we're not going to hire a stenographer.
Because next Wednesday night is the hearing.
Oh, is it? Okay.
It's for the Wester here, Wester.
Yes, for just the Wester, yeah. And that way, you don't have to pay for a stenographer.
Okay.
And that would be a lot cheaper.
I, I think too, just, well, hopefully, West TV will be here next Wednesday for a meeting.
Right.
And, and they'll find out then. I hope that's enough advance notice.
Yeah. It's, yeah. And again, again, I want to thank West TV. I've really seen a big increase in positive phone calls, maybe not positive letters in the newspaper, but positive phone calls. That, you know, we are reaching all parts of Montague County, and we're trying to get the communication out. Is there anyone else from the public who'd like to speak? Great. Okay, then I, can I have a motion for a German? I can't.
That means if I don't make a motion this meeting.
That's right, we stay here.
I'll move for a German.
I'm moving, and I second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? We'll have a twelve-minute non-smoking break.